Thank you, sir.
It is time to begin the September term of the Williams County Board of County Commissioners. I will call the session to order. Tonight, as we open our meeting, we'll ask Commissioner Cheryl Wilson to have the invocation for us and Commissioner Jason Para to lead us in the pledge of the flags. If you would, please stand for the invocation and then the pledge.
Please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day and for the blessings that we have in this wonderful county and in this wonderful nation. Be with those service members that are around the world protecting our needs and our efforts throughout the world. Dear Heavenly Father, may the words of our mouth and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in thy sight. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll have our Ms. Anderson, our clerk, to call the roll. Don't punch a button, we're having some technical issues at the moment. So, as you can see, Ms. Elaine, we have 23 present. The Commissioner Williams is absent tonight, so we're missing Commissioner Ernie Williams from our assembly tonight. At this point on the agenda, I would like, without objection, to move up to this part at this point, to move up the election of the Commission Chairman and the Commission Chairman Pro Tem. Any objection to moving that portion of our agenda up to this spot on the agenda? I see no objection, so...
Second.
Let me leave the chair first.
That's all right, Clyde.
Let me leave the chair first, so if I could, I'll ask our Deputy Clerk Jeff Widby to assume the chair, and then we'll conduct the election.
The floor is now open for nominations for Chairman of the County Commission.
I move for nomination of Houston Naren for County Chairman.
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Lynch, seconded by Commissioner Bain, to nominate Commissioner Houston Naren. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to move that nomination cease? Motion is made by Commissioner Walton, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor to elect Commissioner Naren Chairman by acclamation, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Chairman Naren is re-lective. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Floor is now open for election for Chairman Pro Tem. Motion is made by Commissioner Davis, seconded Commissioner Lynch, the second. Any other nominations for Chairman Pro Tem?
Nomination cease.
Motion by Commissioner Little, seconded by Commissioner Langston. Nomination cease, and we elect Commissioner Walton by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 14, 2008 County Commission Meeting. Each one of you received a copy of these minutes in the mail, entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Cook, the second, to approve the July 14 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Thank you. Introduction/acceptance of the Highway Commission Minutes. These were sent out in the earlier communication. I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
Those are approved.
Second. Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Chaufonte, the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Under Citizens Communication, and I would like to make some announcements, because I understand a lot of folks that are here tonight are here for several reasons, I'm Our rules are very clear that we follow under the Commission Minutes, under the Commission Meetings for purposes of citizen input. We have a 15-minute section allowed and set aside for citizens' comment, and if there are, as I'm told, eight people to speak, that's a minute or so apiece. But before we get into that, in case some of you want to speak, I want to let you be aware that the resolution, as it relates to 90831, has been pulled by the maker, Mr. Louis Green, who was the maker of that resolution. And I want to recognize Commissioner Green to make some comments, because we're certainly here tonight to hear any comments that you might have to us, but, and if it was related to this, I'll ask those that wanted to speak to, we'll recognize that. But this resolution has been pulled, and I've had a previous discussion with the Commissioner. Mr. Green, would you just like to make a statement on that, please, sir?
Yes, as far as this resolution goes, because of the far-reaching implications of it, beyond the content of the resolution, I pulled it with no intent not to bring it back to this body.
And that's the resolution to establish a policy prohibiting guns in all buildings owned and controlled by Williamson County and to direct signs providing notice to be posted at the entranceways of each building. That's the resolution. It was late filed, and Mr. Green has now pulled it. And does any other Commissioner like to make any statement to that before we go to Citizens Communication? I see none. At this time, then, we'll move to Citizens Communication. The first person that signed up, and I would ask you, when I raise my hand, that means that you're about finished, and if you would cooperate with this body and wrap things up, otherwise I'll have to close you down. So, please help us with that, because we do have business to take care of tonight. First person on the agenda that signed up is Mr. Rob Anderson. If you would, when you come to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and information for the record, so that we can know exactly who you are, and we'll move forward. Mr. Anderson.
My name is Rob Anderson. I live at 1886 Old Magistrate Trace, 9th Street. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate your legislative brilliance tonight. Our work with the Tennessee Fire Association, we, among other things, have promoted Second Amendment rights in this state. We wrote the carry law. Currently, today, there are, as of August 13 this year, there are 202,922 permit holders in the state of Tennessee. There are 4,600 in Williamson County, for a total of 30,000 in its surrounding counties. Concealed carry law, or the carry law more appropriately, has been enforced since October 1994. There has not been, to date, one incident involving judicial action. So, we appreciate, I just want to impress upon you, that the individual's right for safety is the individual's responsibility. It's not law enforcement. Law enforcement protects society. On your desk are cards. Underneath those, inside the cards, you'll notice that there are 34 states that recognize the Tennessee permit. That is all, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kevin Pratt.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Pratt. I live at 19217 Ambiance Way. I'm a certified internal auditor by profession. Before I moved to Tennessee, I lived in Fort Worth, Texas. While I was there, I was a member of Wedgwood Baptist Church. Many of you have probably never heard of Wedgwood. Those of you who have have probably forgotten what happened there, but I have not forgotten. On September 15, 1999, a man named Larry Gene Ashbrook walked into Wedgwood during a youth rally on Wednesday night. He shot 14 people. He killed seven of them before he took his own life. I was there that night. I was 15 years old when I first learned that criminals have no regard for places that are supposed to be safe. Sanctuary means safe place. That didn't stop him, and a posted sign would not have stopped him either. So, I just would like to remind you that laws like this one, this is security theater. This is designed to make people feel safe, but it does nothing to actually provide for the protection of anyone. This is the worst kind. This type of security theater takes away from law-abiding citizens, their only means to defend themselves. So, I urge you to please oppose any measure like this at any point in the future. Allow the law-abiding citizens to defend themselves. If I can leave you by quoting Thomas Jefferson, "Laws that forbid the carrying of arms disarm only those who are neither inclined nor determined to commit crimes. Such laws make things worse for the assaulted and better for the assailants. They serve rather to encourage than to prevent homicides, for an unarmed man may be attacked with greater confidence than an armed one." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hi, I'm Bill Robinson, 7905 Oscar Green Road, Franklin, Tennessee. I got my statement prepared, but in lieu of Mr. Green's pulling the resolution, I'm just going to say a couple of things. I'm one of the thousands of county residents that the first speaker talked about that went through the training and the expense and all the time to get a carry permit. I'm 65 years old, never been in jail, never been arrested, a couple of speeding tickets when I was a kid, and I'll relinquish my spot, because the first two speakers said exactly what I want to say. But I appreciate Mr. Green recognizing that maybe this was a little premature, and I hope it never shows up again. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ralph Bakew. I'm at 1185 Saddle Springs Drive, Thompson Station, Tennessee. And thank you all for pulling the proposal. I also hope that it doesn't come back again. I'd like to make a few points that might not have been made previously, and I'll be very brief. Pros resolution infringes on the constitutional rights of all residents, but particularly those law-abiding residents and businesses in Tennessee, particularly in Williamson County. It will not have any effect on the criminal element, except to reduce the criminal's risk by openly announcing a gun-free zone. Have you also considered how this would affect those who do business in the county? Those who may be armed in the course of their daily business? This could drive their business to other locations outside the county. More than that, the proposal will not deter or prevent crime. In fact, not one study, including studies by the Congress, Department of Justice, Congressional Research, Library of Congress, I could go on, not one study showed that gun laws ever reduced crime. And moreover, Bureau of Justice statistics show, in their interview of felons, that felons feared approaching a place where there may be a concealed weapon involved. They didn't want to encounter potential armed citizens, so that deterred crime. Now, we live in a dangerous society where the criminal element, in spite of our good intentions, seems to have no regard for human life. The previous speaker mentioned that. They just don't seem to have the ability to leave law-abiding people alone. Forms of gun control, such as this proposal creates or announces a gun-free zone, which tells them they may be safe from response. And the facts have shown that guns in the hands of good people can deter these crimes. Often, good people with legal gun permits will prevent or settle a crime at that instance. An armed, lawfully armed, private citizen can save your life, my life, as well of our family's lives. Therefore, I think we need to take a courageous approach, a courageous attitude towards issues like this, and honor the requests from our fellow armed citizens, and also honor their constitutional rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Randolph, raise your hand. Where are you? Raise your hand. If you would, I'm going to get the other gun comments, and then I'll come to you. Chris Rhodes.
Chairman of Commission, likewise, I thank you for withdrawing the resolution. Two weeks ago today, State of Tennessee issued me concealed carry, or it's a carry permit. In order to receive this, I had to go through eight hours of training, qualifying, I had to pay close to $200 for this. I was fingerprinted, there's an FBI rags on check, and I had to wait a lot of time at the DMV as well. But at this point, the State of Tennessee and the federal government have said I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I reserve the right to be able to protect myself. I can do business in county-owned properties in Williamson County. I can carry a handgun for personal defense. And with this language, it would say it would be a criminal act, if this resolution actually carried, to do business in Williamson County-owned property while being lawfully able to do that. So, I'm not a criminal. I don't want to be considered a criminal, nor would I like to have to pay $500 fine to be able to protect myself in the future. So, I appreciate if this bill, or any bills like this, would not come up in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Harry King.
Hi, I'm Harry King. Live at 2801 Buckner Lane, Spring Hill. And I thank Mr. Green for withdrawing this, and unfortunately, I got here a little bit later. Next time, or hopefully, there won't be a next time I have to come for this, but I'll get here early, because they've already said what I wanted to say, that, you know, there haven't been, I don't know of any firearm incidents that have ever happened in a county building, and there are probably no statistics on it, because if there were, it's probably only a handful. And this resolution wouldn't keep, you know, this is for future, you know, a resolution like this will not keep some criminal from coming into any building, like the man from Texas said, with a firearm, a knife, a baseball bat, or a hatchet, or anything. And all it would do is add another burden to the policemen that have to enforce this thing, and burden to, you know, regular law-abiding citizens, you know, like, you know, would come to some building or something, would forget, because, you know, you're used to carrying your firearm with you. And so, it's just, it would be an undue burden, an unnecessary burden. So, I thank them for withdrawing, and I hope, you know, that it never comes up again. Thank you very much.
Mr. King, we can't promise it'll never come up again, but I can promise you with the feeling of the folks around this table, and especially from the chair, it need not Moving on to Ms. Flo Randolph, and I think she's talking about the Brentwood High School renovations, but I'll let her tell you that, so we'll give you the mic.
Hi, Flo Randolph, Brentwood High School, PTO president. Just wanted to point out that our school really needs the $3.8 million renovation that is going before in the budget. The high school is presently, has 1,500 students. We were built in 1982 for 1,000. See, in the future, probably having 2,2500 students, with Ravenwood's overgrowth until the East Side is built, East Side High School's built. There's so much that we need to do at our high school. The Campbell Center, which is our drama auditorium stage, is got lights that are falling, that are not even secured, the bent poles, we've had fire to the draperies, the seats. Last week, we had our PTO open house. It was so full that people were lined along the side and along the doorways, and two rows, two whole rows of the seats were broken, and you couldn't sit, they were dangerous. The arts departments, the dramas having to store props in the hallway, which, there's just not enough space. The library, we'd like to renovate our library. Students are being turned away, because there's just not enough room there. The wires from the computer are, basically, you have a bookshelf to get a book. From here, there's the bookshelf, and there's wires. There's all the tables with computers with tons and tons of wires. Worse than that, just right, coming out, because in 1982, they weren't set up for the computers. And it's kind of embarrassing, you're in such a close quarter, that the student's getting a book out of the bookshelf, and everybody's staring at them from behind, and just, there's so much that needs to be done. Lynn, is there anything else you can think of? We need auxiliary gym, auxiliary gym, because the drama department's in that gym, so we don't have that facility. I know we're landlocked, but there's just so much that we could use and do, and there's just to get us up to standard, and the congestion, I don't know, just, we need it really, really bad, and would appreciate your support to bring us up to date, so our children can have a better place to learn, and just need that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks to all the Brentwood parents that came out to support us.
That concludes the Citizens Communication. Moving on now to Communications and Messages, let me just ask, ask from the chair, if you have a pager or cellphone that you turn it off, or have it on silence, as this is the legislative body of Williamson County, and we are conducting business tonight, so we'd ask you to cooperate with us on that. We also have one late-filed resolution, 90831, the one that was pulled by Commissioner Green, has been pulled from consideration. We have Resolution 90832. This is a late-filed resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority for the installation of guy wire anchors in Williamson County, sponsored by Commissioner Green. Is there any objection to hearing that as a late-filed resolution this evening? I see no objection, so we will leave that on the agenda as the item, as it falls under late-filed Resolution Number 32. This time, we'll move on to the other communications and messages. Want to also respect the fact that Lynn Sutton is with us tonight. As our Sergeant-at-Arms, I always thank Lynn for being here with us. We also have Sheriff Jeff Long with us tonight. Sheriff, welcome, and thank you for being here. Proclamation of appreciation to honor flight volunteers, County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to also ask that Mr. Paul Fleaner come up. Paul had approached me several weeks ago about sponsoring this proclamation, and if you would, allow me to read this into the record and then present it to him. This is an appreciation to honor our flight veterans, whereas every WWII veteran can remember when they, where they were when President Franklin Roosevelt addressed the nation and said yesterday, December the 7, 1941, a day which we'll live in infamy, "The United States was suddenly and deliberately attacked by the naval and the air force of the empire of Japan." And whereas in May of 2004, the WWII Memorial was completed and dedicated in Washington, DC, and whereas in an effort to honor the veterans, he had taken care of, as a physician assistant and a retired Air Force captain, Earl Morris conceived the idea of the Honor Flight program to provide a means for WWII veterans to visit the memorial that was specifically created to honor their service. And whereas a network of participating programs has been formed to assist these senior heroes from all across the country, pooling their resources, experiences, and alliances to help get these WWII veterans to their precious memorial safety. And whereas it is only fitting and proper that we honor and express appreciations to those who serve, now it'd be therefore resolved that I, as the mayor of Williamson County, do hereby congratulate and applaud the efforts of the Honor Flight Volunteers, an organization consisting of local citizens and representatives of the Roy F. Allen Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 4893, who have worked diligently to organize, support, and fund an Honor Flight scheduled for December the 24th, to take, September, excuse me, September 24th, to take 100 local WWII veterans to see the WWII Memorial. And I have signed this, and Paul, thank you very much for doing this and organizing that.
While we're still under Communications and Messages, it was just brought to my attention, and I see Judge Easter is in the building, and also Gail Moore Harris. It's been a great honor, that I think it fitting that both of you come forward and tell the commission about that judge, and Ms. Harris.
As most of you know, Judge Easter presides not only as the Circuit Court Judge here in the 21st Judicial District, but takes on an additional docket of drug court. And the state of Tennessee has started a process of requiring drug courts to be certified in order to be sure that there is a level of expertise and professionalism. And the 21st Drug Court, presided over by Judge Tim Easter, was awarded its certification just a few days ago, and we're one of the first drug courts in the state of Tennessee to receive that certification.
Here's a copy of our plaque. But this belongs to everybody here in Williamson County, Hickman County, Lewis County, and Perry Counties. We could have not received this without funding that we receive every year from the Williamson County Commission through different types of funds. So, anyway, this belongs to not only the drug court and all of our graduates, but to all of us here in this county. Thank you for letting us do this.
Thank you, sir. Reports of county offices, Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'm going to ask David to make his way up here and to give you the financials. But before he actually steps up here to the podium, I'd like to ask the following people to stand in the audience that have had a very big impact in our county over the last few days. Mike Thompson is not here, he's worn himself out. Bill Jorgensen, Louis Bumpus, Tony Fortner, and Doug Hood, law enforcement agencies from Franklin and Brentwood, and Franklin City Police. Police. Over the last several days, ending last Saturday, over three, nearly 350 evacuees were housed at our rec center out on Hillsborough Road. And through the efforts of the Red Cross, who oversee, oversaw most of the operations that are out there, the, the operation itself could not have been accomplished without these men and their team of workers that worked tirelessly around the clock. So as sad as that was in Louisiana for them to be in that situation, they got a homecoming, home-cooked meals here, many, many people volunteered, but, but these folks are the ones that, and I probably overlooked some, but these are the ones here in Williamson County that stepped up to the plate and took care of almost 350 people from Louisiana, and I thank you very much, gentlemen.[652.04][652.04](APPLAUSE). And if I could, I'll ask David now to give you an update on the budget items.
Mr. Chairman, the normal budget reports that we give each month, the first item in your packet is the monthly budget report for July 31st, our first month of the fiscal year. And of course, it's a little early to make any kind of comparison from that, but we do see everything is in order, and budgets appear to be spent in a consistent manner, so we have no problems there through the first month, and we'll keep you up to date on that each month. The next item that we look at each month is privileged tax. In your packet is the month of July. We just finished the August report on Friday, and we thought it was very important to go ahead and get that to you and not delay that another month. So you have July and August before you tonight. Just as a note, I might mention to you that going back to last year, '07, when we started seeing some decline early, but along in the fall, even a larger decline in our privileged tax, for the month of July and August of '07, we collected just over $1.4 million. For July and August of '08, we collected only $461,000. So we're just over a million dollars short for two months last year compared to this year. Last year, July and August, even though they were down some, they were not down as drastically as they began to be in the fall, so quite a bit of drop there for two months, and it's something we're going to continually keep you posted on, and hopefully we'll see some turnaround of that, but we haven't seen it yet, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the report from the Cool Springs Conference Center, and we do have a negative report for the month of July of $28,532. We never like to have a negative report, but that's fairly consistent for the month of July. A lot of the businesses are taking off, and people taking vacations, and so they're not having as many conventions and meetings during that month, so certainly we're not happy with that, but it is fairly consistent with the month of July. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none, thank you, sir.
And as I said, Mr. Chairman, I did overlook too, Becky Bromley's sitting out there, I didn't see her earlier, the health department, she was there many, many late hours, and so was the hospital and an ambulance, so I apologize for that. That's the end of my report. I know this, you've got quite a lengthy agenda, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Mayor Anderson? Mayor, one fact that you and I discussed, I just think it shows the impact of this significant $1 million under where we were last year. Would you report to the body how many building permits were approved last month in the county?
An incorporated area, approximately five.
Five building permits. Thank you. Schools director, Dr. Rebecca Sharber, please.
Good evening. School is well underway, and as a matter of fact, it is almost time for progress reports, believe it or not. We're almost four and a half weeks into the first quarter of the school year. I hope you are continuing to get our FYIs each week, and they, we try to keep you updated on all the exciting things happening in the school district in that weekly communication. I also hope you've received your all-events passes that we sent out to you, and we hope that you will feel free and will use them. There are many events going on, football games. I know I, I saw at least Mr. Davis out in the rain at Ravenwood watching the football game, and I'm sure other people were out in the rain in many other football games, and people were attending the band expo at Page High on Saturday night. We have their volleyball games going on and all kinds of events, so please use those events passes and, and come see our students, because we have extremely talented students in Williamson County. I think you would enjoy watching, watching them and all of their different kinds of performances. We do have, I'm going to speak to you briefly about a resolution that we have before you this evening, just because I'm not sure I will have the opportunity to speak to you when we get to it. We do have an intent to fund resolution before you. It's a very large intent to fund resolution. It has many buildings, many additions, many other pieces to it. We have brought this through the education and budget committees. I, I, as I told them, I also want to make it clear to you, when we brought this resolution forward, it was not a funding resolution to say we need $125 million this month. It is a resolution based on the capital outlay plan, which we have put before you on an annual basis to let you know in the future we are going to need these kinds of facilities. The future is here. All of the facilities that are listed on this intent to fund are needed. They are not needed immediately, and it was clear when we tried to talk to the budget and education committees that they were needed within the next three to four-year time period, some of them immediately, some of the additions, but some of the buildings within three to four years. We had certainly believed that there would be funding resolutions along the way after this intent to fund, which would have broken down the funding of these buildings over periods of time. We are, after those meetings and after really an unsuccessful result from the two committees in terms of supporting this intent to fund fully, we are working currently to try to provide to the county mayor's office a breakdown of how these things could be funded over time, and we're hopeful that we can bring those items back to you over some period of, of months or years to try to, to get these items funded. We, we have seen growth this year, almost 1,200 new children since the end of the first month last year in the district, significant growth. I understand Rutherford County only grew 800 students this year. So people still are coming to Williamson County, or they're having children who are maturing from babies in Williamson County to come into our school district. I don't see this growth coming to a stop, so the current facilities we have are just not going to last longer. So I hope you will continue to consider the fact that we need these facilities, these renovations that we've requested, and whether it's tonight or sometime in the future, you will support the board's request for these facilities. And that's my report for this evening. I'll try to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions of Dr. Sharber? Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, Dr. Sharber, you're aware that I've always been a little concerned about this federal funding we get and how it's spent, and I have a couple of questions. Are those monies co-mingled with your regular checking account? Or are they separately accounted for?
They're separately accounted for.
Okay, in lieu of Nashville's problem, from what I've seen, is it possible to get a statement from you and your chief financial officer that these funds have been spent within the guidelines of the federal government?
Sure.
I noticed Nashville's got a little bit of a problem right now, which...
Okay, we shouldn't have a problem.
Okay.
But we'd be glad to do that.
I don't need it, I'd like to see maybe a January meeting, whatever.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I see none, thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome.[1164.83][1164.83](APPLAUSE).
Any other committee wishing to report at this time, reports through this section of the agenda? Anybody wishing to report? See none? Moving along to elections and appointments. Elections, recommendation of the county mayor, ethics committee, one-year terms expiring August '09, county commissioner Lou Green, nomination, Louis Green, county commissioner Houston Aaron Jr., nomination, Houston Aaron Jr., county commissioner Ernie Williams, nomination, Ernie Williams, constitutional county officer Sadie Wade, register of deeds, nomination is Sadie Wade, register of deeds, and then the board committee, commission, authority, corporation or other member, Mr. Rick Berger, who is a water authority member, and Mr. Berger has agreed to serve another term. So this is a recommendation from the county mayor. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Walton. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. We now have the recommendation for the county mayor, from the county mayor, for the budget committee chair, the budget committee for the next year, Clyde Lynch, chairman, Commissioner Arlene Cook, Commissioner Lou Green, Commissioner Doug Langston, and Rogers Anderson, county mayor, making up the five members of the budget committee. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Commissioner Bain, the second, Commissioner Tommy Little. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Purchasing and insurance committee, Commissioner Russell Little, Commissioner Jack Walton, Commissioner Reba Greer, Commissioner Cheryl Wilson, and Rogers Anderson, county mayor. Entertain a motion.
Approved.
Motion by Commissioner Langston, the second, Commissioner Hester. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. We've already conducted the other elections here, the steering committee, appointments and recommendations, investment committee, Rogers Anderson, chair, Joey Davis, trustee, Commissioner Steve Smith, Commissioner Tom Bain, Commissioner Tommy Little, Commissioner Arlene Cook, the motion, Commissioner Green, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Audit committee, Commissioner Clyde Lynch, Commissioner Russell Little, Commissioner Tom Bain, Commissioner Hayes, the motion, Commissioner Mills, the second of the audit committee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Law enforcement, public safety committee, Commissioners Hancock, Walton, Barnwell, Chalfont, Mills, Para, and Williams.
Commissioner Brockman.
The motion, multiple seconds, Commissioner Green, I heard, second. All in favor of the law enforcement, public safety committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Property committee, Commissioners Bain, Tommy Little, Brockman, Ford, Hayes, Davis, Jones.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Walton.
The property committee, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Education committee, Commissioner Greer, Commissioner Tommy Little, Barnwell, Hancock, Brockman, Ford, and Mills.
Second.
Commissioner Walton, the motion, Commissioner Cook, the second. On the education committee, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Tax study committee, Commissioner Greer, Commissioner Russell Little, Steve Smith, Hester, and Wilson.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All in favor of the tax study committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Public health committee, Commissioner Hayes, Chalfont, Hester, Jones, Para, Davis, and Williams.
Commissioner Bain, somebody raise their hand at seconded.
I heard several, Walton. Public health committee, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Adoption of the committee assignments as recommended by the steering committee. Notaries, you've received a list of notaries that have been sent out for adoption. I'll entertain a motion to accept the notaries as presented. Commissioner Wilson, the motion, who is the second? Commissioner Little, Tommy Little. All in favor of the notaries, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Consent agenda, you've received information, there are three resolutions on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Commissioner Walton, second, Commissioner Brockman. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, show it unanimous. Adoption of the consent agenda. Moving on through to new business, no zoning appropriations, with the resolution number 9-01, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners approval of an intent to fund $125,841,480 for various capital additions and improvements for the Board of Education. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, the second. Report from the committees. Education committee.
Five yes, one no, as amended.
The school board voted 12 yes, zero no. Budget committee.
Five, four, zero, yes, and as amended.
All right, sir. Explanation in, Commissioner Davis, please.
It might make sense to get the amendment on the floor first.
I'll entertain that, sir.
The amendment is, is typed up, the numbers are typed up in front of you and are passed out tonight. Amendment to resolution 9081. We amend the total amount to $13,350,000. There's, there's an itemized list of those items that are to stay in the resolution, and I could go over it by whereas if we need to.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
The motion has been seconded, so if you would explain it, Commissioner, please.
I defer to the head of the budget committee, Commissioner Little.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. There were two meetings that occurred. The education committee met two weeks ago. Last week, we had a combined meeting. Altogether, we had probably about seven hours worth of meetings over this, and they mostly centered on this one resolution. I heard on the radio this morning that the spotlight was at the, was at the commission committee had rejected the school board's recommendation, and that, that's not true at all. That, that's bad reporting. What we've done, though, is, if I can boil this all down, try, try to get it to where we understand, the discussion centered around several points. Number one is, do we need these schools? Do we need them now? Are we paying too much for them? Should we be building larger schools? Are they in the right place? Are we prioritizing correctly? There was, so this thing has been run through the mill backwards and forwards, and so what became evident about this whole thing when we, when we were getting there, this is really not a $125 million intent to fund, it's really about a $250 million intent to fund is where we're going to over the long haul. The school board has a function of answering most of these questions that I just threw out. That, that's their function. The county commission's function is to say, on one end, no, we're not going to fund it, and on the other end is yes, we're going to fund the whole thing. What we've tried to achieve here is somewhere a balance in between. This amendment right here speaks to that, saying that these are items that we need to go ahead and commit to right now. These other items, we hope to get together over the next 30 days, hopefully, it may take a little longer, but our goal is to get, is over the next 30 days, is to arrive at how these other numbers are to be, are to gotten to. It is the county commission's job to come up with the money, to figure the whole thing out. So how do we do this, and how do we structure this whole thing is where we need to get to. The school system has done their job, saying that we need these things, and, you know, we can sit here and argue semantics all day about that, but that's not our job. Our job is to say, are we going to fund it, and if we're going to fund it, how? So what we're asking you is to approve this amendment to this resolution, say, let's move on. our job. Our job is to say, are we going to fund it? If we're going to fund it, how? So what we're asking you is to approve this amendment to this resolution, say, let's move forward with these things that need going now. The Brentwood High School thing, we can come back, just to speak to that specifically, that was discussed, and it was discussed that this is something we need to move forward on, but that was something that said, we can still wait thirty days to move forward on this. We have not rejected anything on this list at all. It's a tough pill for this commission to swallow, a few million dollars, much less a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in one big gulp, and then realizing this whole thing. So what we're asking is your indulgence to do this, give everybody time to get together. And one of the best suggestions I've heard going through this is that we really should have a meeting with the county commission, combined with the school board, a workshop, where everybody gets together and understand each other's jobs here, because when we get together, we can solve this thing in the least painful way. So, those are my comments. Like I said, I encourage you to go this, let's not muddy the water anymore, because we've been through seven hours of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hancock, please.
Mr. Chairman, is this amendment an intent to fund?
As I understand, this amendment is to amend resolution nine oh eight one, and yes, sir, it would be amending, this would be the intent to fund, would be amended to thirteen million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as I understand it.
That's correct. It's an intent to fund. Is there any prevailing reason why the items in this amendment could not be put under the same scrutiny of what Commissioner Little has suggested over there of combining the school board and the commission together to work, put, make that as a part of this that we're working through? And the question I'm asking, are there, are they so much a priority that they couldn't wait for this other process to work itself out?
I'm thinking on, I guess you want to...
And I would ask...
Commissioner Little.
Either one of the commissioners.
Thank you. The number one item on there, the almost ten million dollars for Spring Hill Thompson Station Middle School, this is a project that we've already committed to, and this is the additional funding in order to move forward with this. Now, something came forward, a piece of information came forward today, and I think this may be correct, but I can't speak to it definitively, probably need Mr. Coleman up here, but we may not even need the funding for this immediately because of the way these things. This may wait till the spring bond fund, bond issue instead of the fall. But the intent to funds, if we approve these things, the, moving the bond issue, that's not, that's not our decision until these come forward. That these, these are just saying that these are projects that we know are worthwhile, and that, yes, we're intended to fund these things so that the people that can be, that say, okay, we know that we're pretty much assured we're going to go ahead with this, and we can start the planning on that.
Mr. Coleman, would you come forward to address the issue that Commissioner Hancock has raised, as well as Commissioner Little? Because I was informed today that there's not nearly the press of time on these projects as was discussed and presented to the budget and education committee last week.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to address that. You might want Kevin Fortney to come forward, and we've had several discussions since last week, and I think these items probably are still the priority items, but the timing of them, it's my understanding, the nine point eight million may not be needed until maybe late spring? And then the additions to these elementary middle schools might not be needed till February, March, April. So, to address Mr. Hancock's suggestion and the schools, I certainly don't want to answer them, but I don't think it would delay those if we put them in with a whole mix for another thirty days, but they might want to address that.
Mr. Fortney, or Dr. Sharber, either of you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. There was a conversation with David, Mr. Coleman, and Mayor Anderson today that I had, and the question was posed to me on the items that are on that list for funding, that we intend to fund. You know, are those needed? Yes, those are absolutely necessary to be able to meet our schedules. The question was, when does the majority of the money have to be distributed? I said, as with any project, we've got to have funding to get the architects going, to get the geotechnical services going, to get surveys and so forth, okay? Once that is done, which is a process of anywheres from thirty to ninety days to get those things going, then the construction goes in. Generally, that first, you know, the, when those contracts are bid, you know, they're submitting pay applications on a monthly basis, okay? When those pay applications are submitted, the first month may be fifteen percent of the total amount. The second month may be an additional twelve, fifteen percent of the total amount, and so forth, until the project's completed. So, the funds are absolutely necessary. You know, how the commission, or budget and finance, or whoever allocates those funds over what period of time, that's something that I'm not the expert on.
Let me, let me rephrase the question, because you haven't answered it yet. The question is this. Is there a reason, would the project be hampered in any way if the commission does exactly what Commissioner Hancock has asked, and study this over the next thirty days, and have a decision on this first piece by mid-October, whenever, November? Does that hamper the project? That's the question.
I thought I answered that, and I think it does to some extent, yes.
So you need an intent to fund now for this to get started?
That's my opinion, yes, sir.
Okay. Could I answer your question, Commissioner? Commissioner Hester, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to address some of the misunderstandings that have been happening with this intent to fund. We will go to bond market, and, yes, as a member of the education committee, I do intend to fund these projects. Particularly, important to me, of course, being in the second district, is design and construction for West Haven Elementary School and the Oakview Central Area Middle School, the design there. But I will yield the floor now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hester. Commissioner Para, please.
Couple things. First, I agree with Commissioner Little about getting a group together between the county commission and school board. I think we can talk through a lot of these issues and figure out what's needed and exactly what timeframe and what size school, and I do support that. I did support the amendment in the education committee. I did have one question on Edmondson Elementary, the two-classroom addition. It's the smallest addition, and obviously, it's more costly than the others because of probably some cost to get ramped up. But I, the question I had was, it's, right now, L. Edmondson is one hundred and thirty-two students under their capacity. What's the, why do we need this expansion right now, since it's only two classrooms and they're under? Is there, are we trying to shift some students from another school?
We've already rezoned students from Sunset Elementary School, where we were overcrowded, to Edmondson. The grandfathering will go away over time, and therefore, more and more students will actually move in that direction. And we looked at the rezoning based on the fact that we could put two new classrooms on there. So we took that into account as we did that rezoning.
So when, when would you project with grandfathering, it would be at capacity right now? I mean, you're one hundred and thirty-two under, when, have you looked at when you think you'll be at capacity?
No. Well, I'm sure we have, but I don't have that information in front of me. But I can tell you, that's why we were adding the classrooms, was to absorb that capacity.
But...
Hopefully, we won't actually be at capacity totally.
Right. This addition, though, you guys are asking for it to be done by next August. So you think by beginning of school near, next year, you're going to be at capacity?
Well, there's a potential we could be, but I don't know that we will be.
Okay.
Or at least need the classroom space. I don't, again, capacity is different from needing the classroom space, because, as you know, in the elementary schools, if you get one student in the wrong place, you have to add a classroom. So sometimes you're not really at capacity, but you still need the classroom space.
Right. And two, is the maximum classrooms you can add?
That's all we can add. That's all the space we have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm confused. I've heard one person say that if this passes, we'll go to bond council in the spring, and then Mr. Fortney says, well, he needs the money pretty quick. So if, if somebody could explain that to me, again, I'm confused.
Mr. Coleman, you've heard the question, and I apologize for Mr. Fortney, if he answered that question, I missed that answer, so I'm confused apparently, too. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I could try to kind of separate the issues, and I think this is one thing we tried to do at education and budget the other night, was to separate the issues of an intent to fund and a bond resolution. And Mr. Fortney and I, I think, are on the same page. We can take care of his needs in a timely manner. If this part of this resolution was put off thirty days, the schedule that we would have right now is, we would need to have a bond resolution back to this body, no later than November, because you don't meet in December, and we have approximately twenty-five million dollars already on the books that we need to borrow before the end of the year. So that would be our first opportunity. If this piece comes back and is passed, it could be included in that. Beyond that, if this piece were put in with the whole twenty-five, one hundred twenty-five million, and you came back in, back in October or even November with a intent to fund resolution passed for whatever amount, then we could still go back to bond and bring your resolution in January or February, and still have the funds available in a timely manner for Mr. Fortney's needs.
Follow-up, Commissioner?
Yes, because when I left the budget and education meeting the other night, I was under the impression that they needed this thirteen million dollars PDQ. And with that, we were trying to get the Brentwood monies in there, and the school system says, well, we won't need that money until summer. So we agreed that that would be a spring bond issue. But now, new information's come out that they, we won't go to bond for any of this till spring. So should we make an amendment to add the Brentwood to that, to this intent to fund? Or will that come back under a separate resolution?
Mr. Chairman, my understanding, again, is Mr. Fortney said he would not need those funds until summer, and again, we would have ample opportunity either before the end of this year or in a January, February issue. We would hope to just do one issue after the first of the year. It might be January, February, it may be April or May, but in any event, we would get those in plenty of time. And we would just time that for when the project's going to start, when we need the funds. So, again, and, and we would bring those back to you in a bond resolution that would list each project that we're actually going to borrow the money for at that time. So, I guess what I'm saying is that if you pass this tonight, whether or without Brentwood, it really doesn't make any difference. What's going to make a difference is what you come back in October and November, and then what we bring you in the bond resolution of what's actually going to be borrowed. And we can time that. And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, one direction that came out of the budget and education meeting the other night was that the school staff, Mr. Fortney and Ms. Holman and myself, and possibly some others, get together and work on a payout schedule for all of these projects. And I know they're working on that at this time, and hopefully, we'll have something for you in a couple of weeks. And I think that would help us, you know, I think someone said earlier, they've done their job, they've told us the projects. Now what we've got to do is figure out the timing of when they actually need the money. And I think that's what we're underway to try to do now.
One other follow-up, Mr. Chairman. If we pass this tonight, Mr. Coleman, or this intent to fund, we don't have to borrow the money in two thousand eight?
No, sir. An intent to fund, we can sit on that and borrow that when the need is, comes available.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mills, please.
I think I've heard, Mr. Chairman, what I wanted to. I went to Brentwood, and I don't remember why I was out there, but I went, and those wires, and the, in the library, with those computers and everything, I didn't fall, but I walked most gently through there so that I would not fall on it. And I don't know how we came up with this list of schools, and I'm sure they all are needed, but Brentwood certainly needs something in that library, and other things, I'm sure they need it, too, but they really need that library worked out.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Mills, for that support. I appreciate that. I think the Brentwood library, I think the description here is a little bit of a misnomer, too, because there are six different pieces that are included in that, and I've got a breakdown here of what all of the, to point out where all that goes to, if anybody is interested in that. And the library is an important part of that, and Ms. Mills is exactly right, the library is in bad shape, it is, that is one of the dire needs. Well, one of the other things that is not itemized on here, that hasn't been mentioned, is there are actually classroom additions to Brentwood High that are included in this three point eight million. There's two additional classrooms that are going to allow some of the math classrooms that are now using science labs to be able to move out of that and be able to move into that. So when I look at this project from Brentwood, and I look here at, we're funding the other classroom additions, it only makes sense to me that since there's classroom additions, since there are also design fees that are needed with this project, that we go ahead and add this to the list. I'd like to make the motion that we add the three point eight million for Brentwood to the, to the amendment here, to the intent to fund, and make that total seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Ford, seconded by Commissioner Cook, to add the three point eight million dollars for Brentwood High School, making that total, Commissioner Ford?
Seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Discussion on that amendment.
And, Mr. Chairman, if anybody's interested, we have a breakdown of all the costs that are associated with that, the different pieces of the project, and I'd be glad to hand that out if people want to see those individual costs. We also, if people are interested in, it may not be technically possible, we actually have pictures of the Brentwood library on a thumb drive that we could, if there's a computer, we could stick them in and throw them up on the screen if anybody needs that level of detail.
Okay, Commissioner Cook, you're next to speak. Would you like to speak on the amendment?
Yes. I wanted to add to what Commissioner Ford said. It's not just the library that needs renovations. We have science rooms that are laboratories and the classroom attached together. So those rooms cannot be used separately. So if somebody has a chemistry class, nobody else could use the lab, and vice versa, where when they do the renovations on those rooms, the labs can be used individually, and the classrooms could be used individually, which will free up a lot more space for that. We have some safety issues in the gymnasium. The bleachers really aren't usable. People have stepped on them and fallen through the bleachers. There's certain parts that you can't sit on them. There's a lot of things. In fact, the one comment that I would like to make, the school, except for one addition, is exactly the same the way it was when my, when my son graduated in nineteen eighty-nine.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up to speak, Commissioner Chalfont, on the amendment, please.
Yes. Commissioner Cook touched on this, and this is the oldest high school currently in the county. It's had very little, but cosmetic improvements throughout, throughout the years, and it, we need to make a commitment to fund this three million eight, without a doubt, and go ahead and get it on the list so that we can go ahead and proceed. I think Mr. Fortney just said, just a few minutes ago, that until he gets the money, they can't really get started on it, and can't, can't get plans... they can't really get started on it, and can't get plans drawn, and we need to move forward on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes on the amendment?
Not the amendment, the regular.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Davis, please, on the amendment?
I'm in favor of the amendment, but to echo what Commissioner Little was saying earlier, we debated this for seven hours. And the reason that Brentwood is not on the amendment that was already on the floor is because we were told that nothing would start till the summer, we don't need the money now. It wasn't any opposition necessarily to the Brentwood renovations. It was a matter of timing. Even though now that it's on the floor, I'm going to support it, because the other ones that we already have on the floor are still intent to fund. But I hope we don't go over through each item like this. We've done this for seven hours already, and we were told we don't need the money immediately. So we thought there may be a better use of our time and use of the school board's time to go over and rehash them outside of this meeting. So I am going to support the amendment, but I hope we don't go forth and add every one of them. There are many others that many commissioners here would support, but we don't need to rehash them all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bean, please.
Yes. I would echo everything. We were on the Education Committee, and I was asked a question today, and I don't know the answer. Mr. Fortney, I know we can't start the construction until next summer. Will it be completed by the time school opens next fall? Brentwood High School? When will it be completed?
If you're asking if the entire Brentwood project would be completed over the summer, no.
When will it be completed?
It would have to be in phases, and I would say that it would be over a period of up to two years to get everything in there. The exterior, the two new classrooms could be constructed while school's in session, but the labs we're going to have to do at various times.
If that's the case, why did we, were we told it could be put off to next summer?
I don't know why you were told that. I think they're saying maybe the funding. I don't know.
Follow-up, Commissioner Bean?
First of all, I would like the opportunity to say that in the combined budget education committee, we got to present our needs for the top two schools, and then the discussion was taken out of our hands. So there was no discussion about what was needed at Brentwood High School at the committee meeting. So all of this stuff you're talking about, we would have been glad to present to you, to the two committees, about what was needed at Brentwood High School, but there was really no discussion about it, other than I was told that we wouldn't start on the Brentwood High project until next summer, which is logical considering the items that need to be added.
That's not how I recall the meeting. I recall you saying, if you guys need something to cut, we're not going to do this until next summer anymore.
I didn't say that.
Well, I would hope we would have a tape of that somewhere, because I swear you said that.
You didn't tape, you don't tape those meetings, as far as I know, but you might. No, you talked about adding it. Mr. Fortney told me we wouldn't start until next summer, and I came up and I said, we won't begin that until next summer.
Okay. Yeah, that's right.
I think that's how it happened, yes.
So if it were funded, we could start before next summer?
We could probably possibly start on those classroom additions. There are things we will not be able to do inside the building while children are in the building. I think that's logical.
But he just said that certain things you can do. So that's my question.
There are some things we can do. There are things we can do on all these projects if the intent to fund was approved, but none of it can be done until you decide to approve a bonding resolution. The intent to fund for the entire amount could be approved tonight. It doesn't give us any money. All it says is that this commission believes that we're asking for the right buildings in the right places, and that you will agree to fund them at some point in the future. I think the disagreement, however, is not, the disagreement would be funding the entire amount at once. That wouldn't be necessary, and we were never asking you to do that. And I said that clearly with the Budget and Education Committees. But I think there is some disagreement among some people on this commission about the need for some of those buildings and the places we think they need to go. But that's, those statements have not been made publicly, so I'm not aware if that's true or not. I'm just assuming that, since there's so much resistance to just simply supporting the board's request. And I want you to think, if you want to have a joint meeting between now and your meeting in October, what that's going to entail. That's four weeks to get 36 people together at the same time to have some kind of a discussion, and I'm not real sure what it's going to be about, and who's going to lead it and how that's going to go. But I'm sure that would be a good idea. I'm just not sure how that really, at the end of the day, is going to positively change or affect this particular intent to fund that we originally put on the table. But we can, anything you approve tonight as an intent to fund that's on this list, we're going to be happy about, because we think all of these things need to be done. But we're still going to be working with the county mayor's office in terms of putting together when we need funds for which projects. But it is harder for us to say, we need funds for a project that you haven't even approved an intent to fund to do. Does that better explain things, or worse? Okay, I'm sorry.
Follow-up, Commissioner? Commissioner Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the Brentwood High renovations, I support all these, as well as all the other projects that we talked about on the original list. Mr. Ford talked about adding classrooms at other schools and used that to justify putting the Brentwood 3.8 million on the amended list, when in fact, the new classroom addition, which could be done while school was not in, was in session. If I look at Mr. Ford's list, right, it's only 275,000 as a portion of that 3.8 million. It looks to me like most of the other things on this, on this list would require, would have to be done when school was out of session. Otherwise, they'd require the students to give up the library, and give up the gymnasium, and all these other facilities while they were being remodeled. So my question is simply, goes back to the timing, as Mr. Fortney said, some things can be done, can begin immediately, specifically the 275,000 classroom addition. These other things are going to, of necessity, pretty much have to wait until the summer. So my only question is, is the timing of adding the whole 3.8 million at this point? It seems to me it could go back with the balance of the list to some sort of further meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're still on the amendment. Let's see, Commissioner Cook has spoken on the amendment.
Well, I can understand Commissioner Smith saying the 275 is the only thing needed, but you can't even build new classrooms without at least including the 190,000 for design fees. So those things would have to be, that money would have to be allotted early so that when summer comes, or if they start those classrooms, those projects can run smoothly and not waste another 30 to 90 days trying to find designs.
Commissioner Walton? Call the question.
Second.
Question being called for on the amendment. We're voting on, all in favor of the call of questions, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Call of question has been called. Resolution 908-01, amending the total to 17,150,000. That's the amendment that's been offered by Commissioner Ford, seconded by Commissioner Cook, that's on the floor for discussion. Got it loaded on the machine. All in favor of amending the resolution to 17,150,000? Press your buttons. Everybody vote, wish to vote, record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Okay. 20 ayes and 3 noes.
20 ayes and 3 noes. So the amendment, increasing the amount to 17,150,000. That amendment has passed. We're discussing then, the motion 908-01 is amended. Further discussion on this resolution? Back to the original motion, as amended, 908-01. So any discussion on the motion 908-01, as amended? Commissioner Hayes, I've skipped over you, I'm going to come back to you if you'd like to speak at this time, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted just to address the need, particularly in the 3rd district, of the work that is proposed here in the Spring Hill Thompson Station Middle School, the Page Foundation work, and the Bethesda Elementary. You just have to see the size of the growth there to know that it is needed. Some money has already been spent on the design, on the land for the Spring Hill Thompson Station School. It needs to press on. And Kevin is absolutely right in the fact that he doesn't feel comfortable in going and spending the money until we've said the promise that it will be funded. So I would urge us to go ahead and approve this funding amendment here and the 17,150, so we can go ahead and get this work done. We have portable classrooms everywhere out in that area, and you just have to go out and see the size of the families and the growth to know that it's very much needed, as well as the future schools that will be planned there. Thank you.
Commissioner Little, Tommy Little?
My question is, what, and I've heard this batted back and forth, what does the intent to fund actually allow us to do? It doesn't appropriate any money. It doesn't give them anything for design fees. So what does it allow us to do? Because I'm not sure I fully understand, besides making us commit to spend that much money down the road.
Mayor Anderson, if you could come forward and give us an elementary education discussion of, explain to us what the intent to fund actually does. And that's an appropriate question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The best way that I can explain it is that you, as the county commission funding body, are making a commitment tonight, for now, the $17 million plus up there. The resolution that has been amended is $17 million. And what you're telling, if it passes, Mr. Little, what you're saying is that these particular projects that make up that 17 million, at some time, October, November, we will come back through the different committee systems and bring it forth in a form of a bond, that you will have the say-so with all that, you've seen several of them, thick paperwork that goes through bond council that says that you're going to fund $17 million. The directors of schools, David, and several comments have been made here. All you're doing tonight is saying, and that you want to see these $17 million worth of projects in the next bond, if you agree to do that here in a few minutes, which you have voted on. You just voted on the amendment. Now, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I need to bring out some of the discussion that we've had, and Mr. Little, Russell Little, was, and Mr. Davis, both of them chairman of their individual committees. At some point, you're not only going to be faced with going through these projects of the 125 million dollars, and the 125 million dollars, as Mr. Little has said, represents $250 million, because you're literally buying land, which, not arguing that they need them. It's a matter of how much and when do you want us to do something with the tax base? Now, that's very hard for me to stand up here and say, because many of you, for the last 20-some odd years, know that I am huge and pro-education. But you're also going to have to stand here and push that button for tax, to be able to pay for that. I don't question that Brentwood needs it, don't question that Spring Hill needs it. It's a matter of how do we structure that? I'll give the basic lesson one more time, that some of you didn't hear, that it is, and David is prepared, I'm going to, as I'm going through this, I'm going to let you see how much we've got, that you've already approved, $25 million. Then if we add another, all I can add is 13. We were prepared to talk about 13. But if you add another 3 or 4 million, which you're doing, how much that's going to cost to the tax base? Tonight, you heard David say earlier, our privilege tax, which a lot of the 25 million was going to go to help pay for that, it's down $1 million through the first 60 days. Now, all of these projects, that's why people move here. We do have the best education, and we have some of the finest facilities. But we've also, in this committee, asked the schools, which they have provided, we have not been able to get it to you, how much it costs to open every one of these schools. When you build an elementary, when you build a middle school, when you build a high school, each one of them comes with a number that when you turn the key to open the door and unlock it, it costs anywhere from a million and a half to 2.2 million dollars. High school costs 2.2 million dollars. And it generates about $500,000. So if you put the math to it, it's about 3 or 4 cents, 3 and 1/2, 4 cents, that you put onto the tax rate. The privilege tax is off, the sales tax is flat, the housing market is down. That's why we ask the opportunity to come back to you and not get into this discussion of saying, when can these projects? I don't dispute Dr. Sharber's comments that they're needed. I don't dispute the lady that spoke from Brentwood. I don't dispute any of you wanting to have them. We all are, we've always been able to do that. But allow us to get those things in. If you approve, if we took to market, Mr. Little, brought in a bond resolution in November, and we borrowed the money in December, in six months, you owe the interest on that money. In six months, you owe the interest. In six more months, you know, you need the interest and the principal. And we've got that laid out for you. David, if you'll pass it out. You have to see, this, you know, this one's a marriage. It's going to go parallel. And if you all want to do a five-year capital intent to fund for $250 million, let's lay it out there, and let's say schools, there's $250 million worth of building projects over the next five years. We'll know exactly how to do that, lay it out. But you also have to go along with the funding on it. It takes 13 votes to get this funded, whether you do it in no delay of December. You have 25 already. You've got them out, David? All right. Here we go. Come on up, David, and let's talk this through. So far this year, you've approved $24,871,549. That's the amount that you've already said, let's go to market. That's a tax equivalent of 2 and 1/2 cents, nearly 3 cents. As you're passing those down, we can structure this to phase it in over the next two or three years. We can do that. But it is going to require the next commitment on your all's part if some things do not happen here in this county. Because we do have to pay for this. Get them passed out to you, so. While they're passing those out, David's getting up here, the other sheet that we'll pass out in a few minutes is where we ended the year. We haven't got all the, we have not got all the data.
We've just got one sheet.
It's a different.
This might help, when you get both copies. When you get both copies, if you look in the lower right-hand corner, under the column that says total tax equivalent, you should have one sheet that says 2034, and the other one, 0454. You have both of those, Russell?
Got the 2034 one, but... Got the twenty thirty-four one, but...
Should be one oh four five four coming around.
Yep, there we got it. All right.
First, we're gonna stand here and double team you and explain what we have tried to do here. The first one we'll talk about will be the one that's got in the bottom right-hand corner, point two oh three four. If you go up to the top, you will see that on, there's resolutions number seven oh, to the left-hand side, seven oh fifteen, seven oh eight fifteen, sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-two, and ten. You've already approved, so far this year, twenty-four million, eight-hundred-seventy-one dollars and five-hundred and five-hundred-and-forty-five. That includes capital projects for County General, two-point-five-four million, school capital projects of seven-point-three, Beasley Drive property of four-point-five, historical courthouse renovation, six-point-five, and four million dollars for Parks and Rec project, total of nearly twenty-five million dollars. David's broke these down into the different debt services and the equivalent tax rate all the way across. Underneath that, you can see the file request. This is taking it right out of what Mr. Davis, Davis and Mr. Little have approved. School file, the schools' file request, nine oh eight one, the one you're looking at, and in the spring, if you add those two up, that'd be the one hundred and twenty-five million dollars. We just broke those out to give you a comparison. That gives you one hundred and twenty-five, eight forty-one, four eighty, and the total to borrow would be one hundred and fifty million. Carrying it all the way over to the right, it tells you the pennies that it's gonna require to fund all of that. To fund the twenty-five million dollars and to fund the one hundred and twenty-five million that's been requested would take approximately twenty-two cents. How do we get that? Go to the third column from the right, you see the twelve, point one-two-eight oh and point one-three-two one, that's fourteen cents. You add the next column, which is almost eight, fourteen and eighty equals twenty-two. To do this whole process that you're talking about is a twenty-two cent calculation. What we were trying to do is phase this in over a period of time so we could take advantage of the law. Right now's a good time, if you're gonna borrow money with our AAA rating. David was telling me today that the bonds are very attractive out there on the market. It would make you think to go rush out and borrow a bunch of money. But the same problem, you have to pay it back. And if we could phase this in over working with the schools, that when do you need it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, over a period of a couple of years, traditionally, we do one or two bond issuances a year. And maybe we need to rethink and get outside the box. Maybe we need to do one every three months or every four months. Maybe that's what we're gonna have to do. Because their numbers are indicating we do need some additional classrooms, their numbers are indicating that we need some additional schools. That's your job to figure out if you want to do it. It is our job to bring the material to you, how much it's gonna cost, because you're gonna get those phone calls on the other side, I promise you too. And you need to understand that. David, I leave anything? The other sheet that I want to, you know, make some notes here, and this kind of discussion is what we're trying to have with the two committees, with the schools, trying to come out with a system we can lay it out so that you all don't get into, well, when's it actually coming, the spring, or is it actually coming? I know Kevin can't start a project, no more than we can in the county unless you've got funding. You don't, you don't bid something out, you can't authorize the winner to it. But there's different times. We might be able to phase this in over the next, we're hoping, twenty-four months to thirty-six months that it, that makes sense, that we don't have to go borrow one hundred and twenty-five million dollars and it's set somewhere. Because by arbitrage, as you all know, we can't make a lot of interest on that money. I mean, we're just, you don't need to borrow it if you can't, if you're not gonna use it. Interesting figure, and Mr. Barnwell brought this out during the July County Commission meeting. Our budget this year is three-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars. Our estimated expenditures is three-hundred-and-forty-eight. We're gonna spend about sixteen million dollars' worth of our fund balance. You got those sheets, David?
Thank you.
One of the reasons that we went through the budget last year and held the strings real tight, we took money out of fund balance. Mr. Barnwell picked up on that, you all picked up on that, and that's what you wanted to have, to have a no-tax increase. This also will show you our rural debt and our general debt service funds. We put those together hurriedly for you today. As you can see, unless something happens in the privilege tax, unless something else happens, begins to happen in the county, we're gonna have to move some money around about May of next year. It's tight, we can do it. You all just need to tell us how much you want to do. Mr. Chairman, I'm not preaching, but I do know, I've been here long enough to know, it's easy to sit here and talk about adding all these projects, but we do have to pay for them.
Mr. Mayor, would you address one more question or comment? This number of twenty-two cents plus, that's considering only the one hundred and twenty-five million dollar request. If you add the operational cost and make, next year, it'll double that? Is it safe to say that that would become forty?
No, I don't think it'd double it, you know. And it's first, it depends on what comes online, Mr. Chairman. When you talk about, you know, hiring new teachers and, Becky, do you remember how many teachers we approved for this year? New teachers? Do you remember, Leslie, how many new teachers, total? Eighty new teachers. If you hire, if you open a high school, I'm not sure, I mean, the last school we opened was Independence. Do you remember how many new teachers we had? And it varies by school, by school, district to district. But I can tell you, when you turn the keys on a new high school, Mr. Chairman, it's two-point, based on their numbers, approximately two-point-two million dollars you're adding to their budget, and we didn't do anything else. And if you do a middle school, it's less than that. And if you do an elementary school, it's a little less than that. But just to turn the key, to hire the teachers, and run the programs, you've got to, you've got to put that operational in there. And this does not cover the operational. This is not what we'd borrow money for. This is borrowing for bricks and mortar, and the land, and et cetera, not the operational side. But it is a cost factor that we have to take into consideration. Mr. Chairman, any other questions? I hope, I'm not, I just wanted to bring you all to reality, and you, I'm not questioning they need the schools, because they are, some of these schools are packed, and they're all individual. But if you'll allow us some more time, we got this about thirty days ago, it's been through committees, Mr. Russell's exactly correct, we've gone through several hours of it, and Director of Schools is correct. I don't know that we cut her off, we just quit talking about it. We got the thirteen million, said, hey, you know, let's do something, because they've got projects going on in Spring Hill, we need to do those. But you're not doing that tonight. All you're doing tonight is saying, we want to fund these projects, and we'll bring you back a bond in October or November. We will also bring you that back on this other, from whatever you all tell us to do. If you want to fund the one hundred and twenty-five, which is two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, we can tell you how much that's gonna cost, based on today's dollars.
Commissioner Little, any follow-up on that question that you had?
No, I think he answered my question, if I understood correctly. We could still, even though our intent to fund is just this now seventeen million, that doesn't stop us in thirty days or sixty days, coming back for the, with the bond issue for forty or fifty or sixty million, whatever's needed, whether we've done the intent to fund or not.
I think I follow you, more or less. What you're, what you're saying tonight on an intent to fund, they're asking for one hundred and twenty-five, you all have got seventeen million on the board, you're saying these are the ones we for sure want to see in a bond issuance, Mr. Mayor. Now, you haven't bought it yet, you haven't voted on it, because you can change your vote as late as the bond issuance. You can change it. But over the course of history, the last twenty-some-odd years, and some have got longer than I, when we give a commitment to the schools, we're gonna go through with those projects. I have not seen that happen, ever, in my twenties. John? Clyde?
No.
It's been twenty, in the mid-eighties. When we tell the schools, you're gonna get X amount of dollars, you guys have stepped up to the plate, sometimes it's been tied on the vote, but you stepped up to the vote, the plate, and voted for those, and you've told us, now you all figured it out. So, if you make the commitment, that's what we're gonna do. That's why people are worried, well, can I get on that commitment? That's what it's all about.
You're exactly right.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd stay close, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I voted against the amendment because I'm against the original amendment. The reason is, the last three items, I felt that those were not necessary at this moment. And I actually introduced an amendment which failed for lack of a second. But even though the, the schools, the new schools were discussed quite thoroughly, these additions were not discussed very well at all. And I think what, what put everybody into shock was when they told us that it would require a twenty-one to twenty-two cent tax increase to fund all this. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I am for this, this resolution as it stands right now, but I think I agree with the fact we need to have a committee of, and it doesn't need to be the whole commission and the whole school board, but we need to have a philosophical discussion with the school board, maybe through the Education Committee, to chat about the size of these schools. I think that's one of the big things in this intent to fund, was with status quo on sizes, and we've got school sizes all over the board as far as what we actually need. And I think it's time for us to reassess the, how big our schools should be. I think the last one was done twenty years ago. And I think it's very critical, at this stage, with all these schools we need to build, is make a determination, are we building them the right size now, for this day and age? And also, on this intent to fund, this, this thing that the mayor gave us, this one hundred and twenty-five million dollars, I think we need to get a little more sophisticated. We're looking to borrow the whole one hundred and twenty-six million by the spring of next year, and probably seventy percent of the expenditures won't be till the end of two thousand nine through two thousand and ten. I think our association has a construction in progress funding mechanism, the County Commission Association, or CTS. Well, we could probably do some sort of funding through time and borrow our construction costs, and then at a certain important time, take what we borrowed and bond that, versus bonding now, make one percent interest, and pay four percent over time. So, I think we really need to evaluate that to do a drawdown basis, to fund these schools over time, and then do our bonding after their construction is completed. That's all I'll say, thank you.
Commissioner Langston, please.
Yes, I want to just reiterate a few things I said the other night at the Education Committee meeting. I support education, but I also said that I think we do need to have this conversation, much like Commissioner Barnwell said, that we do need to have this meeting. I think we do need to look philosophically, how we're building the schools, and do they need to be bigger? I know that Director Sharber said, the cat's almost out of the bag with what we've got right now, that it's very difficult to amend what we are doing at this point in time. But I think in the future, I really would encourage, and would like to see, and think it would be very important, that we reexamine the issue and just have a philosophical meeting of minds as to size, and port location, and things of that nature. Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, it's well and good for us to sit here tonight and spend all this money when we're not actually spending it. And it may all be needed, but what you've got to remember, if you all look at the papers, a lot of these school systems in Middle Tennessee is having a lot of trouble. In words, when you start getting a reaction from a twenty-two cent tax increase, it would be almost impossible to get thirteen votes from this group of people. So, we need to think about that a little, because you're gonna get the reaction from Because that twenty-two cents is unreasonable. I'm chairing the Budget Committee, and I wouldn't vote for twenty-two cents.
Got several others wishing to speak, we've also got a high sign that we need a break. You gonna finish this up? Okay, let's see, Commissioner Russell Little?
Call the question.
Okay. Question being called for, all in favor of call the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're calling the question on the amendment to the amendment. So, the amended amendment, the amended amendment is seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the amended amendment. If this passes, we'll, we'll go back.
We voted on the amendment to the amendment.
We voted on the amendment to the amendment. So, we're gonna vote on the amended amendment, and if this passes, we're gonna go back and vote on the amended resolution as amended. So, we've got two more votes, and then we're gonna take a break. So, if you're in favor of...
I need to put, do I need to put another, this is the resolution, do I need to put another vote in?
Yes, we're voting on the amended amendment. Because if you remember, the original resolution is for one hundred and twenty-five million. It was amended by Commissioner Little and Davis to thirteen million. And then there was an amendment, on the amendment, that passed seventeen, one hundred and fifty million. So, that amendment passed, so we're gonna vote on the amended amendment. So, if you're in favor of the amended amendment as amended, seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, press yes button. The amended amendment. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty yes, three no.
Okay, twenty yes and three no on the amended amendment. So, we're back to the original resolution, nine oh eight one as amended, and the amount as amended, seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's who we're voting on, the original resolution as amended. Any questions? If you're in favor of the original resolution as amended, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Commissioner Hancock, Lynch. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-two yes, one no.
Twenty-two yes and one no. So, resolution nine oh eight one as amended is adopted, seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm gonna declare a ten-minute recess. Okay, we're back in session. Resolution number 902-2. Resolution amending the 2008-9 general purpose school fund budget, $24,439 revenues to come from Sprint grant. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. School Board, 12, 4, 0, and 0. Education Committee?
5, 4, 0, against.
Thank you.
Education. Education Committee?
5, 4, 0, against.
Budget Committee?
Yeah, us too, I'm sorry. We're just trying to speed us through the process. 5, 4, 0, against.
All right, explanation, Commissioner Davis?
This is a grant received from Sprint, and there's no money coming out of our resources, so let's go forward.
Discussion, questions of Commissioner Davis or Little on this resolution? Is there teaming up? If you're in favor of resolution 902-2, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. So everybody who voted, wishes to vote, the court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
23 yes.
23 yes, 0, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 908-3. Resolution amending the 2008-9 general purpose school fund operating budget with intra-category transfers for ID protection services. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Walton. School Board, 12, yes, 0, and 0. Education Committee?
5, 4, 0, against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0, against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This is taking money out of the existing budget for schools to take care of the $70,000, to hire an outside consultant for ID protection theft due to the security breach we had, or over the summer, well, whenever it happened.
Okay. Questions of Commissioner Davis? I see none. If you're in favor of 908-3, press the yes button. Opposed, your no button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
22 yes, 1 no.
22 yes and 1 no. Thank you very much. Resolution adopted. Resolution 908-4. Resolution appropriating $389,714 within the 2008-9 general purpose school operating budget for additional regular career and tech, and our special education teachers and related materials, supplies, and equipment from undesigned funded balance. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Little, Tommy Little. School Board report, 12, yes, 0, and 0. Education Committee?
5, 4, 0, against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Davis?
This was for extra teachers to assign when the population comes in at different schools or different classroom levels, where extra teachers might be then needed. They have been needed since this resolution was drawn up, so this is supplying money for those additional teachers.
Thank you. Question, Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think it's for more for Dr. Sharber. It appears to me we budgeted for 1,200 new students when we did our operational budget this past, in July. We've had 1,200 new students this year. Why do we need seven more teachers? I mean, did we misallocate hires, or what is the...
Barnwell, we do our best to try to determine how many children exactly will be in every classroom, so we can try to budget for the maximum class size and the maximum pupil teacher ratio. But what we can account for is when those children come in one over or two under, in different places that we didn't anticipate. And what this is doing is making sure we stay within the mandated either class size or pupil teacher ratio, K3, 4, 5. They're all needed at the elementary school level where those maximum class sizes. We budget so tightly on those maximum class sizes... We budget so tightly on those maximum class sizes, it just takes one or two kids coming in at the wrong place or right place to need another teacher.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Did we hire any teachers based on our projections that we no longer need? Since we allocated based on a certain split, have we hired teachers that don't have a job, are not needed because of the fact that it didn't fill out that way?
No, no, because we, if we had, in fact, we did this. Anyplace where we had too many teachers, based on how the students came in the school, we moved those teachers to take care of some of these issues already. So we don't have any extra teachers with too small a class sizes. At the high school level, we look at the budgeted pupil teacher ratio that we put in the budget and we hire until we reach that pupil teacher ratio, so we don't hire below that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just had a question. I've been getting an enormous amount of emails from Trinity Elementary. And I know that they are, and class size is probably a little bit over in that, this, I'm not sure. Can you address that a little bit?
Right. We can't let the class sizes get over the maximum, state maximum. So their class sizes are not over the state maximum. That's not to say that one of their kindergarten classes might be a little bit larger on average than someone else's, but they can't go over the state mandated average. I think what the issue is, we don't have enough classrooms for all the teachers we have at the building, hence that intent to fund we just talked about, for a new school to help with that, that issue. I think that was the issue, but I think that that has settled out because I think we were not able to have a classroom for their music teacher. And I think that's probably where you've gone, some phone calls or some emails. The principal was waiting to see if she was going to need that classroom, thinking that she might go over those class sizes, but so far they haven't. So I anticipate she may move the music back to that classroom. I think she does now have one classroom that is not used with the classroom teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Para, please.
Are these required for the state ratio or your own internal ratio?
No, they're the state maximums. We budget it whatever the state says is the maximum class size and the K3, 4, 5, or really it's 4, 6 pupil teacher ratios in law. They say you can only have 25 per classroom max, or that number moves up as you go up the grade scale, or 20 K3 or 25, 4, 5, 6.
But you have ratios lower in some of the other grades, right?
Well, we, we might have ratio, well, we have ratios lower than that in some of the high school classes, actually, and some of the middle school classes. But, but we would have, like, if a ratio, if, like at Bethesda, if we only had four kindergarten teachers, our pupil teacher ratio at kindergarten would be 23.5, whereas we have five kindergarten teachers and it's 18.8. But if we didn't do that, then somewhere along the K3 ratio, we wouldn't work out to the 20 to 1. So yes, across the district, you'll have something smaller, but you'll have something approaching the largeness as well. It just depends on how it works out in terms of the overall K through 3 or 4, 5, 6.
Commissioner Cook, please.
Did we have a large influx of students coming after Labor Day?
We did not have a large influx of students coming after Labor Day, but some of these students have been making these class sizes go over since the beginning of school and since we didn't have, have teachers. So we've been placing teachers in there, you know, bringing this resolution forward as we had time, the ability to do.
Well, I was just wondering, when some people move, they don't start their children out until after Labor Day?
Right. We, we went over the projection after Labor Day, but not that significantly. But we had two students withdrawn from BGA this week and put in one school and caused the need for one of these teachers. So it's not just a matter of people moving in, it's a matter of people making all kinds of decisions right now.
Thank you.
See none?
Thank you.
9084 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 9088. Resolution appropriating twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-ninety-nine dollars, 27 cents to the 21st Drug Court Incorporated. Revenues to come from designated fund balance. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Barnwell. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
These are funds generated from fines assigned by the court. They need to be released to the drug treatment program.
Any questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor of 9088, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 9089. Resolution appropriating twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-three dollars and six cents to the 21st Drug Court, Inc. Revenue to come from dedicated account. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
These are fees charged by the courts that are retained within the 21st Judicial Drug Court that need to be moved into the drug treatment program.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. 9089 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 90810. Resolution appropriating fifty thousand, five-hundred-twenty-five, fifty thousand, two-hundred-thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents to the 21st Drug Court, Inc. Revenues to come from DUI fines. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation?
Again, these are DUI fines that funds need to be released to alcohol and drug treatment program.
Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, and zero, no. Resolution 90811. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 Sheriff's Office budget by twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-seventy-four dollars, transferring funds from litter division to patrol division. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wilson. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
These are, these are funds because of placing a certified officer in this position that will give the Sheriff's Department more flexibility as far as education and other issues. The money needs to be transferred from litter salaries into deputy salaries, cover the cost of a certified deputy.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes, please.
Yes, Commissioner Smith, I certainly support all these crime prevention and neighborhood watches. I guess my question, will it in any way lessen the effectiveness of our good litter patrol campaigns and groups that we have out keeping our county beautiful, who work so well with our Keep Williamson Beautiful now?
Ms. Chairman, I don't think it will have any effect on that program at all, but it will give the person responsible more flexibility to deal with some other issues, educational issues as well, and provide the Sheriff's Department with some more flexibility.
Our litter group does a fabulous job.
If I could make this comment, Commissioner Hayes, in support of what Commissioner Smith has indicated, I think if anything, this will reinforce it because it will have a certified deputy in charge of that area and that lends itself to greater communication and it's sort of like the deputies that we send out to collect those past new tax bills. It makes a difference when there's a uniform involved. So I think it will enforce it.
Thank you.
Reinforce it. Other questions? Thank you, ma'am. If you're in favor of 90811, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote, please. Commissioner Walton, did I overlook you?
No, just after we voted.
Okay. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed the new sheriff is, is here with us tonight and I would like for him to come up and say a few words.
Absolutely. Sheriff Long, welcome to your first county commission meeting.
No more than 10 or 15 minutes, Sheriff. Happy.
Late night, I promise you it won't be. Just glad to see everybody. Thank you for the welcome that I've received tonight. And I want to tell you that the challenge and the thing we're facing and that I'll make a promise to you, and I told the employees in a meeting the other day, is by the time we're through, we will be the number-one Sheriff's Department of the State of Tennessee.
Resolution 90812. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 Sheriff's Office budget by nine thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
These are funds collected from DUI fees and the Sheriff's Department would like to use those to do some improvements in the training facility at the office down there where they do DUI classes and correction officer training academy and that sort of thing.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. 90812 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution adopted. Resolution number 90813. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008, 2009 Sheriff's Office budget by twenty-five thousand dollars. Revenues to come from reserve fund. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
These are funds, as several of our offices here in the county have processing fees for providing documents, and those fees are dedicated to, to upgrade equipment. These are some computer equipment that need to be upgraded within Sheriff's Department and that'll come from the, those data processing fees.
Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. In favor, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Everybody voted, wishes to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution 90814. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the State of Tennessee and amending the 2008-09 Capitol Projects budget by four-hundred-ninety-four thousand, four-hundred-nine dollars for a public safety interoperable communications grant. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell II. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. Budget?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation?
This is a grant from the state that, that will enable us to, to work with a regional system of mutual aid channels, radio channels, and we're heavily involved in this, taking the lead in this, and this is state grant money to work on that.
Any questions on 90814? I would like just to make a statement from the chair. I am a member of the E9, the 911 Board, but I want to thank Bill Jorgensen. Bill's efforts, Bill stand up. Bill's efforts in this resolution and the one following are strictly something that he put together, he wrote the grant, and this is the direct result of his initiative to make this happen. On behalf of everybody sitting up here, Bill, we appreciate you and what you've done and keep up the good work. 90814 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. This resolution number 90815 is another resolution supported by these efforts. We're talking about resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the State of Tennessee and amending the 2008-9 emergency communications budget by an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-one thousand, two-hundred-and-two, twelve dollars for a public safety interoperable communications grant. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Barnwell still. On the road. Okay. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Similar situation. This is more for operations and training on the regional communications system.
Any questions on this resolution? See none. 90815. If you're in favor, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please. Commissioner Smith?
Must've pushed too hard.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted. Resolution number 90816. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 Other Administration of Justice budget by eight hundred dollars. Revenues to come from 21st Judicial District Drug Task Force. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills II. Law Enforcement Public Safety?
Five, yes, zero, no.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
This budget amount needs to be amended to take into account state guidelines on salaries for these positions.
Questions of Commissioner Smith? I see none. If you're in favor, 90816, press yes button. Oppose your no button. Record a vote, please, Commissioner Brockman. There we go.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 90818. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-9 Community Development Budget by thirty thousand dollars to provide matching funds for the Southwest Mobility Study to be undertaken in conjunction with an update to the Williamson County Major Therapies Plan. Revenues to come from various traffic shed escrow accounts. Commissioner Walton, please.
Move for approval.
Second is Commissioner Para. Planning Commission report?
Seven, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Walton?
Yes, this is a traffic study in the southwest part of the county, as I understand it, and I believe this is just our part amongst different organizations that will contribute to this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it possible for me to see a document that describes the scope of services for this, just so I'll have a general understanding of what this is going to entail? I'm not really asking you, Joe, to come up here and tell me everything, but is there something that shows the scope of this, of this consultant's work? What, what you hope to achieve?
Well, first of all, good evening.
Thank you, Joe.
I guess it is the evening yet. At any rate, what's, what's going on, Commissioner Brockman, right now is we're putting the funds together. And this study will be, it's, it's the nomenclature for Southwest Mobility Study is it's for the entirety of Williamson County, but it's also, we'll be reaching into southern portion of Davidson, northern portions of Williamson, and the western portions of Rutherford because we must connect there. As far as the scope of the study, I spent about two hours in the library reviewing four different scopes of the studies this afternoon to make a recommendation for that, and I'll be happy to share with you all four of them. In fact, if I'd have known that you were interested, I'd let you review them with me.
And Woods and Poole Econometrics have, have, are the, are they in the area or they just happen to be the experts in this field?
No, ma'am. Woods and Poole Econometrics do population estimates, and we subscribe to that service, service. simply because it gives us a good outsider's view as to what kind of growth is occurring in the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brockman, would you like to see those four?
I'm saying, see the four? Yes, sure.
We can, we can.
Absolutely.
Mr. Horn, would you furnish those or make those available to Commissioner Brockman? Anybody else want to review? Commissioner Hester, just check with them, if you would, please. Further discussions on 90818? If you're in favor, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. If everybody voted that wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Thank you, Joe. Resolution 90819. Resolution to amend revenue account from resolution number 70821 for $5,110.32 in donations to the Williamson County Public Library. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Budget committee report?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Yeah, this is, we actually approved this resolution in our July meeting, and there was a typo as far as the account numbers that this needed to go through. So part of our process, we have to reapprove this with the correct account code.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. If you're in favor of 90819, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes; zero, no. Resolution 90820. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-09 Williamson County Public Library budget by $70,376.49. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Wilson. Library Board of Trustees?
Eight, four, zero, against.
Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is, and Commissioners, this is donations we've received from the city and the friends of the library and from a reserve account to buy books. It's an annual thing we do with our donations. We're, more than once a year, but this is the September rendition.
Questions of Commissioner Barnwell? See none. 90820. 90820 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Twenty-three, yes; zero, no. Resolution adopted. Resolution 90823. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-09 medical examiner's budget by $42,500. Revenues to come from Williamson Medical Center and unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Tommy Little?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Public Health Committee?
We was four, four, zero, against.
Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation?
Yes, this is, we entered a contract, we will enter into a contract with Williamson Medical Center to provide our coroner services through forensic medical studies, and this is receiving their contribution and putting another part with it to fulfill that contract.
Other questions of Commissioner Tommy Little, please? I see none. 90823 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Commissioner Lynch? Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 90828. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-09 Capitol Projects budget by an amount not to exceed $205,770. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Who's the second? Tommy, Commissioner Tommy Little II. Highway Commission, approve this. Five, four, zero, against. Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir.
This is concerning tornado debris, litter, cleanup. The Natural Resources Conservation Services has agreed to pick up 75% of the tab, and the other 25% of this is coming from the highway fund balance. This is Williamson County's portion of this, and Williamson County has to get the right-of-way permits to make this happen, too.
Any questions of Commissioner Little on this? And Joe, this is also direct involvement by Floyd Heflin. It's operated to put this together, correct? So I want to commend Floyd for taking the initiative to get this together. Commissioner Davis, please.
I just want to make sure I understand this. This is all on private property. So what happens if we don't approve this? Then property owners either don't clean up or are responsible for cleaning up on their own. Would I be right in making that assumption?
I'll comment while Joe's coming forward. I understand what this is available to do is it allows our folks to go into the stream that runs adjacent to private property. Mr. Horn, would you address that?
It's correct in the sense that we will have to get licenses, easements, as they were, in order to access those properties, and we've already started that process of working on that.
But still?
If it's not passed, yes, sir.
Since it's private property, if we didn't do this at all and nobody else did it, the litter would just stay there on private property. Am I correct?
Well, I think that's a very good assessment. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we need, then, we don't do that for other property owners that have tree damage in other areas necessarily, if it was just a thunderstorm? So just because this is widespread, is that why we're doing it?
I would say so, yes, sir.
And there's 75% of the money available elsewhere?
Mr. Davis, this was, over the last several years when we have these tornadoes, when we have major windstorms, as you know, our highway department cannot, cannot go on to private property and work. In Williamson County, unlike the cities, we do not have a public works department. So many of our streams, so many of our rivers around here, there is no way for anyone to get out into those streams and rivers, although the Harpeth Watershed does try to do some of that up and down the Harpeth. I asked Floyd through Joe's area to see if there weren't some grant funds out there, excuse me, some grant funds out there that we could secure those funds to go into the streams and the rivers. Now, our highway department is not going to do it. We're going to contract that work out. We're not making a commitment for our men out at the department to do it. Your analogy is correct. We don't do this every time. We've never done it. We extend that backhoe when we have a tornado like we had out in Fairview in February. We stretch that thing as far as we can to stay on the right-of-way. And I hope no one ever challenges me on that. But we do get as close to the right-of-way as we can. We ask those people out there. I know Bert was involved, and most of the folks in the first and second. You get it out close enough to the road, we'll pick it up. We'll haul it off. Then we got Louis involved, as you know, to chip all that. This is one avenue, one grant that we went after that we were able to find, but it had some strings attached to it, and our part was 25%. That's as simple. But you're correct. We don't go on everybody's property. We never have. This will allow us to get to the streams.
Well, it's a legal way to do it.
That's exactly, still costs you money.
Is this really getting at rivers and streams? Because Watershed, the way this is listed, can mean anything.
It could, but it's intended to get into the, we've got several streams, rivers. You know, when those trees fall down in the middle of a stream and they get up against a bridge and, but, but, man, we have a problem. So this is one avenue. If we spend the money wisely, we document it, maybe we can go back and get some more. It's kind of a baby step to get there.
Thanks for putting up with me.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes. I urge support for this. There's a lot of people out there that have trees and creeks, and they've been asking for this for a long time, and I commend the mayor for going after this grant. It's badly needed, and I'd love for each of you to support this.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? I see none. In favor of 90828, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty-three, yes; zero, no. Resolution 90829. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2008-09 clerk and master Chancery Court budget by $7,500. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Russell Little?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston? Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, please.
These are fees collected by the clerk and master to pay for technology.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions of Commissioner Little? I see none. 90829. Is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 90817. Resolution to appoint Dennis W. Rotaski as judicial commissioner for Williamson County. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Langston. Law enforcement committee?
Five, yes; zero, no.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, please.
Mr. Rotaski has been recommended by our judges to become a judicial commissioner. He is here in the audience with us along with his wife. I'd like to have them stand, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
He's currently working in the office there. No additional funds, so we'd like to welcome him as a new judicial commissioner.
90817. If you're in favor, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you very much. Unanimously adopted. Thank you, sir, for your service. 90821. Resolution to levy an additional litigation tax in Williamson County for the provision of security in the Williamson County Judicial Center. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton. Budget committee report?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Tax study committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a, it's referred to as little litigation chat, tax, excuse me. It was adopted by the Tennessee General Assembly. I like to look at it as a user fee. It's going to be charged on criminal cases and civil cases that go before the security, go before the courthouse, in the courthouse. We're required to pass this, if we should want this, by a two-thirds majority vote. The collections, we have a $10 fee that's currently charged, and Mr. Coleman advised me that it brings in approximately $85,000 a year. Probably say this is $150,000 to $200,000 a year potentially of funds that will go toward the security at the Williamson County Judicial Center. We've chatted with the two people who have to enforce this with the majority, I believe, of the civil cases that's collected upfront. They're a little concerned that the potential is that we, the lawyers may not want to bond this like they have been in the past. So it's, could be something we'd have to re-review after a while to see if it's necessary to pull this thing. But I think from a standpoint of right now, I think we should give it a go and help with the cost for the security at the Judicial Center.
Commissioner Para?
Commissioner Barnwell, do we have any idea how much we spend right now on security there?
Well, I think, the sheriff is here. I thought it'd be pretty big. It's going to be a lot more than $125,000 a year, $200,000 a year, I would think.
Okay.
We also need to make sure, Madam Clerk, that the record reflects that the committee's recommendation that Commissioner Barnwell is making is that this will be carefully monitored. And if there are any issues with it, then we'll be there to report back to our committee, and we'll monitor that as we go along to make sure that that works, and it's for this one as well as the others that are proposed. So other discussion on 90821? I see none. If you're in favor, press the "yes" button. Opposed, your "no" button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 90822. Resolution to levy an additional $25 litigation tax to retire the debt for the construction of the new Williamson County Judicial Center and the renovations to the old historic courthouse. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Commissioner, who's that, Shellford? The second. Budget committee?[1527.01]
5-4-0 against.
Thank you. Tax Study Committee?
5-4-0 against.
Explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a companion to the previous resolution. It, we're making it specific to retirement of debt, and I think that's required in this. And again, it'll bring in approximately the same amount of money that the previous one brought in, and it'll go toward debt.
Questions? Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you could indulge me, would it be all right if we changed the language so it's not redundant, and we just say renovations to the historic courthouse?
You want to make that amendment?
Yes, I'd like to.
I'm not sure, don't understand what you're saying.
Well, you're saying old historical courthouse. If you could just say renovations to the historic courthouse, I think it would be clearer. But that's just me.
Anybody object to making this change? If we could, Madam Clerk, change the heading to read the renovations to the historic courthouse. Scratch the word "old" and make it historic instead of historical. Is that your intent, Commissioner?
Correct. Thank you.
And then down in section number three, it talks about future renovations of the historic courthouse. And it's in the fourth where, so wherever it is there, it's our intention that the heading, as well as the resolution itself, phrase that and change it to historic, eliminate "old," change it to "the historic courthouse."
Fourth whereas has it also.
Okay.
Whoops. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as long as we're making it, do we need to strike "new" out of that where the new Williamson County Judicial Center, Judicial Center, as long as we're striking them?
Old and new.
You know, if we're taking out "old," let's celebrate the new, too.
It is getting late. All right. If there's no objection, is there any objection? I see none. It is getting late, but we're gonna fix this one. It should say, Madam Clerk, to retire the debt for the construction of the Williamson County Judicial Center and the renovations to the historic courthouse. And if you would, please, ma'am, change all of those references throughout the resolution to read "such," and hopefully everybody will be pleased with that.
Thank you.
Okay? No problem. Thank you very much. All in favor with those changes, 908-22, press the yes button.
I don't have the changes loaded.
No, no, no. I'm just, we're voting the resolution with my direction from the chair for Jeff and Ms. Anderson, just to make those changes. And if you need me to approve them when I sign that, we'll look at them. But we're, we're just voting on 908-22. All in favor, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button. Commissioner Cook. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. 908-24, resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with Williamson Medical Center for its contribution for the cost of forensic medical investigative services. Commissioner Tommy Little?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Steve Smith, the second. Public Health Committee?
4-4-0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
5-4-0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Little?
This is a companion resolution to the earlier one that funded. This allows us to enter into a contract with the Williamson Medical Center.
Questions of Commissioner Little? I see none. 908-24, if you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 908-25, resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus property and authorizing the sale of property and equipment at auction. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Property Committee?
Property Committee, 5-4-0 against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
5-4-0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is property that's been deemed as surplus by the local legislative body, and it's to be sold at auction. And the list of those items to be sold are on Attachment A.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barnwell?
Commissioner Green, I hope, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit here, but these are computers. How have we secured the hard drives on these computers so their, the data does not, in case there's sensitive data on these computers?
That, I would, David, you gonna answer that for us?
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone here from IT tonight, but they do go through these machines and strike out all the information on the hard drive before they ever take them to surplus. So that's my understanding.
Okay. I think next time we have computers, I'd like a little better explanation, because this is pretty sensitive, and if you don't do it right, that data's still on that hard drive. I mean, I take my old computers and I sort of hammer up the hard drive and dispose of it differently than just erase some data.
Other questions? I see none. 908-25, it's up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 908-26, resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners relating to Rule 8.1.C. Commissioners Barnwell and Hayes?
Move for approval?
Second. Rules Committee?
5-4, as they roll against.
Very well. This is a rule change that are being proposed here, and Commissioner Hayes, you and Commissioner Barnwell explained it. It will require 16 votes to be approved at this meeting, because it's a little bit off-cycle, but this was a change that was proposed. Commissioner Barnwell, you wrote the resolution, and Commissioner Hayes signed it. Would you explain it, please?
Yes, so the rules in the Steering Committee are basically one-off committees that meet at the beginning of the year, and they're basically done. And anybody elected chairman of these two committees is precluded from being chairman of any other committee the rest of the year. And this would change that regulation to say that if you are chairman of one of these two committees, you can be a chairman of another committee, since the other committees are more throughout the rest of the year. The reason we brought this, normally we would bring this next month, we're only in these 15 or 13 votes. But we felt this was needed now because of the fact that all the other committees have been formed, and they will have their meetings before our next meeting. So it felt we, it's a good piece of rules, and we hope we can get 16 votes so that Ms. Hayes and I can't remember who's the other committee chairman, have the opportunity to be chairmans in these new committees that have been formed this evening.
Commissioner Hayes, follow up?
I concur. And as he said, the Steering Committee and Rules Committee meet very seldom, so that's not an imposition.
Questions of Commissioner Hayes and Barnwell? 8.1.C. Resolution 908-26, if you're in favor, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes. Very well, receives the required majority. Unanimously adopted. 908-27, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into contractual agreements with Randy L. Sanders, doing business as Cydis Tax Consultants for governmental tax audit services. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Walton, the second. Tax Study Committee?
5-4-0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
5-4-0 against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this is a resolution to give the mayor authority to enter into a contract with Mr. Sanders to provide this service. I think, has he done this for us in the past? Yeah, this is just a new contract based on his previous performance.
Commissioner Davis, please.
At great risk due to the hour, I just have a simple question. How is a consultant paid, and is it legal to pay a percentage of what's collected?
Mr. Coleman, I think is gonna provide the answer.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, yes, it is legal. We have a contract with Mr. Sanders that does call for a percentage of the collection, but also has a minimum and a maximum. And to my knowledge, we've never paid over the maximum amount. We stayed within the percentage. And on the haul income tax over approximately five years, we've recovered about $1.5 million that it cost us of about $102,000. And we've also recovered of the last sales tax audit we did, about $204,000. And on sales tax, a little differently, once you make that correction, then you get that money from then on. But haul income tax, you just about have to look at each year. Our recovery is going down some, so we'll look at that.
You took care of me.
We'll look at that this year. If it's not feasible, we'll hold off a couple of years.
Other questions on 908-27? I see none. If you're in favor of 908-27, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you very much. Unanimously adopted. Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution 908-30, resolution to amend the Williamson County Code of Ethics for officials and employees of Williamson County Government. Commissioners Green, Williams, others. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to get this, who was the second? Tommy Little? Commissioner Tommy Little, the second. Ethics Commission voted 5-4-0 against, voted on the amendment. And if we could at this time, I'd like to recognize, where's Bobby? There he is. If you'd come forward, and do we need to pass these amendments out? Because this, I'll ask Bobby to give a very quick and short explanation as to what's done. The Ethics Committee met, reviewed all these, and is recommending its approval. But if you would, give us an overview, Bobby, and this, tell us what this is that we're passing around.
Glad to, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to make a quick, bring your attention to two quick changes. They are just typographical changes on my part. On page two at the bottom, it said that the questions, complaints regarding the application or any violation of the code shall be directed to the Ethics Chairman. We, during the committee, had decided that it would go to the Ethics Officer first, and actually, if you read through the rest of the code, it makes sense when it's the Ethics Officer. The second one was... Okay, it's on page three, under poundies for frivolous complaints. The first sentence, it said, "Shall be a violation to submit a complaint to the Ethics Commission that has genuine basis of fact." Obvious, it should say, "No genuine basis of fact." So those are the two corrections on that. I will go quickly through some of the changes. One of the changes that I think is the most important is that the previous policy that we adopted that C test recommended did not exclude mortgages. And it was an oversight. Basically, it said that if you got a mortgage from a bank that did business with the county, you were in violation of the policy. The way I have done this now, it excludes mortgages, so you guys can have your mortgages with banks, and we do business with a lot of banks in the area. So that was one of the big changes. If you'll go over to section four, I have made some changes in the gifts. There will be certain restrictions on it. You'll be able to accept certain gifts up to $100 during a calendar year now. Those sponsored events that are done by nonprofits, quasi nonprofits, educational organizations, you'll be able to attend to. Some of the senior citizen dinners and things like that, you will now be able to attend to, where before you could not, because they actually got money as a nonprofit through the county. So now, if you guys are invited to those, you can go to them, if it falls within this definition. The third one was that if it's an event that is held by, and every one of the county commissioners are invited to, you can now go to those. Should you accept a, any sort of gift up to $100, there will be a form that you will have to fill out. The Ethics Commission has approved a form that I've drafted. It's very simple. It just, it says, "Where'd you get it? Who gave it to you? Time, date, specifics?" Quickly through, one of the other changes we've done is we have made it a poundy, should they bring a frivolous complaint. Should they bring a complaint now for a political reason, or for a reason just because they felt they were untreated, you know, weren't treated right, or didn't like the outcome of something, and they bring it against an officer or one of you all, should it be determined that it was a frivolous complaint? It's now a $50 fine that they will have to pay. There are some procedural issues that we have addressed in these. I think that's about it. If you guys have any questions, be glad to answer.
Any questions of Mr. Cook? I see none. 908-30 is the resolution. It will amend this Code of Ethics, and as you can see from this amendment, after it passes, then it will have to go to the State Ethics Commission for approval. And then after it comes back to us, and Ms. Elaine will distribute copies through your office.
Oh, thank you.
All parties involved in the county, when this is, comes back approved. All in favor of 908-30, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button? Yes. Clarification, what you were handed tonight replaces what's attached to the resolution that's been drafted. All in, court of vote, please?
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes. Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 908-31 has been pulled. Thank you. And then 908-32, resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority for the installation of guy wire anchors in Williamson County. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Mills, the second. Property Committee?
Property Committee, 7-4, zero against.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Commissioner Lynch, please.
Mr. Chairman, does this mean property that somebody else has, gives a TV a leak on, lease on some of these? People are really upset because they don't want a TV coming across them. Does this include that, too?
Commissioner Green?
The question is...
In words, where TVs come across, say, "My property," would that include, are they allowed to put them where they want to on my property in other words?
Mayor?
Clyde, no. This is on our property. We sold them right of way to get on our, negotiated with them. They didn't get enough property to run the guidelines. And so until you all give that approval to get on our property to run the guidelines. But it has nothing to do with the privacy.
This is on Fly Park, is it?
Yeah, it's over around Trinity and Fly Park, that line that's running down there, but it is on ours.
Other questions? Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this an unusual situation in terms of a design to hold up these utility poles? Because they've already got 100-foot easement. Is this, is this something that they do normally?
This is, from my understanding of this, and if you can see on that diagram, there's kind of a direction change in the way the lines are running at that location.
Okay.
And in order to support those poles with the tension on it from the two different directions, they have to put these guy wires 39...
Beyond, beyond the 100 feet?
Beyond the, it's 39 feet beyond the right of way. This is 39 feet into, over the right of way.
Right.
Beyond the right of way. But they've had, that design is such that...
I thought they had 100-foot easement. That's what I was asking. So it's 39 feet beyond the 100 feet?
39 feet beyond the right of way, existing right of way.
And it's, and it's, this is just because it's changing direction, and these types of guidelines are seen throughout the county. This is not some unusual design, just curious?
No, it's basically because they did it. I think this is, honestly, I think when they look back at this, they had to do this to support those poles.
Okay.
Because of the tension on it. They have a right way, they have a way to do this, and this is a way to do it. And if we don't pass this, we'd lose the $1,500. That's what the amounts do, because they can do it anyway.
Right. I got you. I do get that.
Other questions? I see none. If you're in favor of 908-32, press the yes button. Oppose, your no button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, and zero no. That resolution is unanimously adopted. Let me make two quick comments. Again, thank you so much for the confidence you placed in me, and I'll do my best to lead us through another year, and I thank you for that tonight, as well as enjoy working with Commissioner Walton. Give me some guidance based on the conversation that you've heard earlier tonight. I know it's late, but how do you want to proceed as it relates to the conversations that we've had around our body tonight on giving guidance and direction on school sizes? You heard the suggestion that we have a joint working meeting with the commission, the school board. How do you, how do you wish to proceed? I'll just, interested in your input. If you don't know, and you want to think about it, you can share your input with me, and we'll make that decision. But any, any feeling at this point in time on, you know, we've talked about school sizes, we've talked about where, where the schools need to be located, and I think it's very clear tonight through this conversation, whether it be Brentwood, whether it be Commissioners Hancock and Hester out in the Oakview area, you know, all of these projects have merit, but it's an issue of timing, funding, and as was indicated tonight on the intent to fund, we've got to work very carefully, because as you saw, the tax increase that's proposed, if, if you add together all of what the impact is this year versus the cost of getting it open next year, you know, that number cascades significantly. So what's the pleasure of the body? You know, think about it. Let's go here. Commissioner Barnwell, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to see us start off on a little smaller note than 36 people try to come together and figure out philosophical needs. I would like to see probably a subcommittee of the Education Committee, along with a committee of the School Board, to try to sit down and hash out what we, our philosophical thing should be to come back to both full bodies. And, you know, if we do have a problem, I mean, there's always the option of going to referendum for the whole kit and caboodle, because it is a big tax increase.
Commissioner Little?
I concur with Mr. Barnwell. I think trying to get everybody together, the Education Committee can either handle this, or a subcommittee of that would be, would be fine. I think the, and we will advertise it anyway, so anybody that wants to attend can do that also. What's in front of us, what faces tonight, the mayor's office is gonna have a good handle on a lot of this going forward. But what Mr. Barnwell was alluding to, we need a philosophical discussion about, are we doing what we need to do correctly moving forward, or do we need to be rethinking some things? And I think opening the discussion up among both bodies is a good place to start.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pera, please?
Yeah, I'd just like the schools to try to provide more information for the meeting. I think there's a lot of these schools that there's just, there's just not enough information. Thanks.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is what Commissioner Barnwell has suggested work. As you well know, you were on the school board, and I was on the commission in the early 80s when we were faced with a $23 million school building program, which at that time was very staggering to this body. It was, I guess, four, five, six times the amount that had ever been passed with schools. So I think Commissioner Barnwell and others are right on target. This process will work. We have an education committee, and we can do with that committee with whatever the school board wants to send us or a subcommittee of that committee. But it did work then, and I think it'll work again.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford?
I would concur. The only alteration I would make is just from a logistics standpoint, the Education Committee's not scheduled to meet for two weeks. I think if we wait for the education... I think if we wait for the Education Committee to designate a subcommittee out of that, we're going to be pushing, trying to get anything back to this body before October. So, I would ask that we look at however the, the school board wants to do. I think they meet next week. They, if they want to designate a subcommittee to meet with us, but let's go ahead and schedule the full Education Committee to meet in on that. And I think we need to get it scheduled, to get the date thrown out there in the next week, and get everybody that can to come.
Well, that, that's my purpose in having this discussion now, because, you know, the Budget Committee will meet, the Education Committee will meet, and to get some guidance so that we aren't accused of sitting on top of this and not taking any action. So, based on what I'm hearing, then, is we will.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Could we possibly designate the Education Committee meeting of the 20, two weeks from tonight, whatever date that is, as being the first task force? And anybody from the school board that wants to be on that committee can come at that time. You're already going to have the Education Committee there. Can, can we use that time and just extend that meeting? Just a suggestion from a timing standpoint.
What, what I would like to do, then, based on this conversation, is, you know, one of my responsibilities as chairman is to assign this to the various committees. So, if I could ask this to happen, the Education Committee and the Budget Committee meet just as soon as possible to organize, because we already have the chairman, Lynch, as chairman of the Budget Committee, have the Education Committee as soon as possible to organize. And then the two committees, if you would, will publicize it, but then you decide between the two of you how you would like to organize, if you wanted the committee of, the whole of both committees, or a subcommittee, if you could. I would request that that be done just as soon as possible, so that we're not in a position of keeping anything from happening. So, if we could do that, those of you on the Education Committee, and Mr. Lynch, if you would work to make that happen, then we'll, we'll get that started, and of course, we'll publicize it. It's, it'll be an open meeting, of course. So, anything else before we adjourn our meeting tonight? Appreciate your input, discussion, and Commissioner Brockman?
I'd just encourage everyone to come next Thursday night. This is sort of our first run-through, matching up our new comprehensive plan with new zoning ordinances. Our consultant will be here, and so we're in the formative stages, and we need to hear from people, and we need to have some input.
Any other questions, announcements? If you're ready to adjourn, get up and leave. Let's go home.